May I have the roll call, please, from the secretary?
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks. Dana Prus.
Here.
Peter Mokahi.
Yes, ma'am.
James Ferguson.
Here.
Tyler Robinson.
Here.
John Spring.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have the minutes of the meetings for February 11th and April 8th. If you've had a chance to review them, does anyone have any questions, comments about the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval. Ms. Dean.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions for staff on the minutes.
Okay.
One of the questions is, we had a conversation at our last meeting last week that there was not a regular issue with resolutions not getting back to us in a timely manner, but our minutes show otherwise. February 11th minutes show that resolutions from June and September did not get to us until February. So that's a really long time. I'd like to hear from staff as to, you know, what the plan is to deal with that case. And that would be the February 11th minutes that it shows under disclosures.
Uh huh.
You can see people disclosed that they were not present for meetings when those particular cases were presented. And cases presented on June 11th were not, people attending the February 11th meeting were not able to speak to those because they weren't there on the June 11th or September 17th. One of the issues I have with this is that we do change members, and especially in October is when we change members. So if we have, you know, cases like this continuing to hang out there, it could potentially be where we can't get a quorum in order to pass a resolution at a later date.
Uh huh.
If it's so far late.
Uh huh.
So I think it's an issue that seems to be hanging around a little bit.
Well, I would agree with that as the chair. I think it is important that we have established some procedural matters to handle minutes and resolutions. It seems, as we discussed in our work session, Ms. McConnell, it seems like some come quickly and others don't come at all, months. And so can you, for the record, discuss that, discuss this matter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner Dean. As I had stated both at your work session and at our last meeting, it is certainly the intent of the department to get resolutions from the staff to the commission promptly, ideally within a month. I do recognize that we've been falling short on that, and that isn't acceptable. We are addressing this internally, both by talking with various staff members, and there are some reports that we can run regularly through our City View application. And we will do a better job. I would let you know that a resolution, excuse me, a resolution can still be passed if, for some reason, there aren't enough sitting members of the board who were present at that case. And you'll know that because of times when you've had to revise a resolution that was, you know, we found a mistake from a couple of years ago. I think that's happened once or twice. But we do hope never to get to that point. So I'll be working with the staff to improve this situation.
Who is responsible for the resolutions? Is it the person, is it the planner that has been assigned the case?
Yes.
Or it is? Okay. All right.
Ultimately, I am responsible.
Right, right. So we'll just make note of that, then, that it is the planner that is responsible for the case. All right, thank you. Well, we look forward to more prompt resolutions. Thank you. Under special order of, so do we have a motion for approval of the minutes? Ms. Dean.
I move to approve the minutes.
This is seconded by Commissioner Ferguson. Are there any question, is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are approved for February 11th and April 8th. Under special order of business disclosures, Commissioner Ferguson, would you please handle disclosures?
Yes, I will, Madam Chair. Commissioner Spring, do you have a disclosure?
Yes, for the record, I was not present at the April 8th 2013 meeting and will be abstaining from voting on resolution 2013-016.
Commissioner Dean?
No.
Commissioner Prus?
No.
Commissioner Mokahi?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Robinson?
None.
And I have none. Commissioner Yoshimura, do you have one?
I have none, thank you. Ms. McConnell, you're in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to let you know that I did hand out two items to the commission tonight. One is the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission training that's coming up on Thursday starting at 11 o'clock. The other one is an updated copy, printing of the current Title 21. If you carry around your Green Book, you'll note that it includes resolutions and ordinances that were passed through, I think it's September of 2009. So clearly, we have not printed a new version of the current code for about three and a half years. And knowing that this is going to be valid for at least another year and a half, we did print them, and so we've provided copies to you. I also wanted to let the commission know that tonight is Karen Iverson's last meeting with us. Karen is leaving the municipality to pursue exciting options, exciting future in the lower 48 states, and I hope you'll join me in thanking her for her work and wishing her all the best.
Thank you very much. Karen, you know, I think one of the finest reports that we have had come out of the long-range planning department is the work that you did for the housing study, which is frequently quoted and is a very important document that we will refer to several times in the future. I was unaware of your departure, and I wish you all the best of luck professionally and Commissioner Ferguson?
I'd like to echo Connie's comments there, and I do appreciate your help. I have a question back to staff about the Title 21. Is it the intent to publish the new version, is a hard copy also, and if so, do you have an estimated timeline on that?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson. You may recall that when it was adopted by the Assembly, there was this thing called Attachment B, which included some ordinances that had been approved by the Assembly in the last five years that amended current code, but that, due to their timing with the rewrite, had not made it into the new code. Couple of examples would be the wind ordinance, the WEX Wind Tower ordinance, and the severe alcohol-dependent housing ordinance. So the Assembly directed us through their ordinance, through the adopting ordinance, to amend the new version with these ordinances from Attachment B. So we are working on that, and as soon as those are amended into the new code, we will be printing that and distributing it. But I think it's probably going to be at least another two or three months.
Okay.
But the approved version, as it stands now, is available online.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson, did you have a change in the order of the agenda or postpone?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Yes, ma'am, Chair, I do. In case 2012-104, I move we postpone that case to June 10th. I believe all the commissioners that are here tonight will be here on June 10th. We have gotten material from staff today, and I'd like to have time to study that and incorporate that. So I'd like to move to postpone to June 10th.
Thank you very much. Is there a second, Commissioner Mokahi, you moved to a second? All right, thank you very much. Is there objection? All right, seeing and hearing no objection, this case is postponed to June 10th. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there items that we would like to see pulled from the consent agenda? We have a resolution. We have a request for an amendment to a public facility site plan review. Are there any items? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion for approval? Commissioner Ferguson?
I move, in case 2013-031, I move to approve.
It's the consent agenda, yeah.
Consent agenda.
Yes. So are you moving to approve case 2013-031 and?
Yes, ma'am, both.
All right. All right, thank you very much. Seconded by Tyler Robinson, is there any objection? Any comment? Seeing and hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to unfinished business. Case 2013-056, draft design study report for a public railroad A Street and 48th Avenue extension and upgrade, 51st Avenue to Cordova Street, PMNE project number 12-22. This is not a public hearing. May we have a presentation from staff, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff report is in your packets. The petitioner, members of the design team pointed out a couple errors in the staff report. On page two, staff has said, under traffic calming, that A Street would be posted 30 miles per hour, but it's actually 25 miles per hour. And then there's a second error on page three, near the top, or in the middle, it says, under goal one, that public facilities, pedestrian facilities will be provided on both sides of both A Street and 48th Avenue. But the error here is the sidewalk will only be provided on one side of A Street and on both sides of 48th Avenue. The design team also wanted to point out that since the report was published, they've had a, another public meeting, or community meeting held, and that was on May 7th. And they said midday and in the evening to present their draft design study report. And this is the second, at least the second set of meetings. I know that they've done a lot of public outreach to the abutting property owners and Be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner is also here to answer questions.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 58 of the bound book, under landscaping recommendations, I have concern, I have great concern with the landscaping that's being specified. When we did Title 21, one of the very, very major concerns and constant criticism of landscaping in this town was the lack of maintenance on landscaping along our roads. And we've done nothing towards that. I drove Martin Luther King this weekend, and I'm going to say three quarters of the landscaping along Martin Luther King is dead. And to, I did not take the time to calculate how much grass we're adding, or maybe not grass, but low-growing native grasses and wildflowers, but they're going to require maintenance. And providing for and not providing maintenance, not providing an estimate, is how come we're having landscaping die? I mean, almost everyone who spoke on landscaping on Title 21 was critical of the city's ability to maintain their landscaping. And so I'd like to raise my concern there and say that I think we need to do something different to try to make sure our landscaping grows. And I don't think that's an adequate answer. On page 20, or page 59, we have an alternative B cost estimate. I'd like to express my concern, my strong concern, that we have a construction cost of $2 million. We put a contingency on top of that, and then we put an engineering and administration fee of 20% and a design of approximately 25%. We need to start managing our engineering and administration costs, and we need to start managing our design costs because those costs are unsustainable at that level. I think private industry would say combined, those two should maybe be 15% to 18%. But at 45%, we can't. And I think part of the problem is I don't see anybody measuring those numbers as we're going forward. I don't see any reports coming back that we're beating our budget, or this is where the money's going. And I do recognize and I accept that this body up here is partially responsible for some of the costs because we bring issues forward to try to get them resolved. But I just think those costs are outlandish and unsustainable, and I would like to see any of these further that come forward, something be more realistic than putting a 25% contingency on top of it and then starting to add those kind of costs on it because they're not sustainable. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Robinson and then Commissioner Prus are both in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess for starters, I would echo Mr. Ferguson's statement, but I wondered if he would ask it in the form of a question and to get a response from staff related to those costs, if that could, if that could either come from you or the project team, whether those costs are typical in, to see A and E of 45% on a project and contingency of 25%. Curious on that.
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson, Mr. Ferguson, I defer to the, to the design team on, you know, the budget that they have for the project.
Commissioner Prus, and then we'll hear from the design team.
Yeah, maybe, if the staff can't answer, maybe the design, I've got some questions. First, on the lighting, you recommended alternate B, so on 48th, the lighting will be on what side of the street?
Through the chair, Mr. Prus, I can only say off the cuff that in terms of lighting, the traffic department reviews to ensure that there's adequate lighting provided along public rights of way. There's a separate review going on within the project management engineering department, and I know the assistant traffic engineer looks at that. I couldn't speak to the lighting. Maybe the petitioners, or maybe the design team could have something prepared to say.
Would it be safe to say that the lighting will be on the same side of the street as the sidewalk?
I just don't know.
Do you have other questions? Are you ready?
I could probably wait until the design team comes up.
All right, okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff at this time? I have one question from staff. Can you tell me, do these things, these projects, do they go to bid, or are they, they go to bid? I mean, not the construction, but the engineering and the design, is it a design, it's a design-build situation? Or how does all that work?
I defer to the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone here from PMNE? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so let's hear from the petitioner's representative, then.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Todd Jacobson, and I'm representing the municipality project management and engineering division as the contract manager. You want me to specifically answer a question, or?
Well, how did you get here? Other than by driving, you know? Is this a project that went to bid, first of all, and then there are other several technical questions? How does that work, since we're talking about costs?
Okay, yeah. I got here through a qualification-based contract that was awarded to the company I worked for for providing management services to the municipality, to, more specifically, project management and engineering. Pretty much at any one time, I'm managing between 20 and 25 different roadway and drainage projects.
Do you have to bid on those projects? I mean, do you have to bid for your fees, or how does that work? I mean, I understand how contractors get their work, but how do you get your work?
Yeah, typically, the municipality for professional services, it's all qualification-based, so.
So is there a rotation, or is it just because they think you're the most qualified, so they give you, they give you the work? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we score the highest in the RFP process.
So there is an RFP?
Certainly. Yeah, every two years, there's been RFP for, the municipality has had one basically since Project 80s is when this process started. So, yeah, we're going close to 20 years now.
So you get all the work during a certain period of time because they go to bid once every two years for an RFP for muni work? Is that how?
No, there's, there's a couple of contracts right now. There's a couple consulting firms that provide management services for the municipality. Specific, oh, go ahead.
How long are the contracts for?
Historically, they've been two-year contracts renewed annually. This contract, for the first time, was a five-year contract, reviewed annually for approval.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
Would it be safe to say that your fees are included in and part of the construction and engineering and administration?
Correct.
Okay. And the design fees would be paid to Dow HKM?
Correct.
On their work?
Yes.
So that's how it broke out. The, back to lighting for one minute. I drove down 9th Avenue the other day and was disappointed. I hate to see streetlights on top of streetlights. It bothers me. 9th Avenue, we have new streetlights, and we have new pedestrian-scale streetlights. And I wonder, wonder why. Do you know if that is intended here?
No, it's not.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Prus?
Thank you. So, so is it safe to assume that, for instance, I'm looking at 48? And is it, is there sidewalks on both sides proposed on alternate B?
Yes.
Okay. And so the existing lighting that comes down off of, I guess, of 48 is, I guess, to the west, well, I guess it would be.
East.
Is there existing lighting there?
Yeah.
So would that continue? Would you, would you estimate along the same line, on the same side of the street on 48th? Or do you think it will? How do we, how do we know what's going to happen there?
I don't know if it's been determined yet, has it? No, not yet. Yeah. Good evening. My name is Aaron Christie, project manager with Dowel HKM. That's, we're still moving towards 65% design and still being determined which side makes sense for the lighting to be on. It's, from an aesthetic perspective, it's nice for it to be consistent and be on the same side. We also look at other things such as other potential utility conflicts. If there's other buried utilities along one side where it would make sense aesthetically, but the cost will, that'll drive the cost up to then relocate those utilities or those possible conflicts, then that might be a reason to move it over to the other side. But if possible, we like to be consistent.
Well, I just, I mentioned that because you mentioned about the traffic on the sidewalk, and most of it would be on the west side because of the hotels and the restaurants and whatnot. And so I just wanted to see if there was going to be a correlation with the streetlights being on the same side as most of the traffic was going to be there. That's, that's one question. Second question is, I noticed this is an interesting design intersection, A and 48, where you actually neck down the road. I assume that's for traffic calming, one of the reasons. So my question is, what are you going to do with the snow?
We have a graphic I'm just going to grab here.
You have to speak into the mic.
Okay, I'll just point from here. So the neck downs that you're referring to, of course, are A Street and 48th. And as far as where snow goes, you know, we understand that there's sometimes, there are some maintenance difficulties with snow storage and where that occurs, right at these intersections. But technically, snow should go behind the sidewalk at this location, or be moved elsewhere as part of the snow removal process. But anytime you have snow, sidewalk at the back of the curb, which is the case all the way up and down A Street, there is a possibility for snow to be dumped onto the sidewalk, and then it has to be, from there, it has to be removed off the sidewalk and placed at the back of the sidewalk. So I'm assuming that would be the case here.
So is there a right-of-way limitation issue for this? Because that, you know, we have snow five months out of the year, so it's a potential problem with both pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic.
Right, right. There is right-of-way. You can see it sketched on here. There's about five feet between the back of sidewalk and the right-of-way.
And do you think that's, that's enough for the, for the whole intersection to go back behind that?
It'll be tight. I mean, it'll be tight in sometimes at certain locations, and that's where snow removal does have to occur, as opposed to just, you know, plowing it off the roadway.
Yeah. I think that's a dilemma for you that you may want to look at.
Sure. And I understand the concern, of course. I'd like to think by bringing it in, it does provide more room, by necking it down, it does provide more room between the back of the sidewalk and the right-of-way. If we were to not have those neck downs, of course, you'd have the shoulders, and I think the snow would probably get stored in the shoulders.
Yeah, it's just apparent that when you neck that down, that the, that the blades are going to, are going to roll it off to whatever's on the outside of that curb.
Right.
Whether it's a sidewalk, or landscaping, or, or the street lighting, or whatever. And then, and then the sidewalk, folks, a completely different group, when it's been maintenance with different, smaller equipment, smaller deals, they're going to have to blow it somewhere, and typically blow it. And, and the way I look at the right-of-way is that there may be some issues with the private, private property outside of the right-of-way because you are pushing a lot of snow from, from the roads.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, it's a good concern that you're bringing up, and it's a problem at any intersection.
Yeah, okay. So that'll be addressed more when you get to 65% or?
Yeah, and we'll try to coordinate with maintenance, too, see what their thoughts are, too.
Do we see this again, or?
I think we only see it again if we ask to see it again and that we postpone our recommendation. Is that correct, Erica?
That's correct, Madam Chair. The next step in the CSS process would be for the Urban Design Commission to review at 65% design.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions. On page 35, you detail the cross-section of A Street, and I, I think I read that one of the reasons, or one of the benefits of the project is to allow for guests staying at the hotels to be able to access, more easily access restaurants and so forth to the north. I assume that meant via sidewalk as well as in cars, and I've actually, I've seen hotel people running across C Street there to get to the other side of the street. So I do know there's quite a few people that, that probably would walk in the immediate vicinity. You know, that being said, could you please explain to me why within 60 feet of, of right-of-way, we, first, the first question is justify why we only have one sidewalk on one side of the street in that area? But the second question is, if we are only going to have one sidewalk, and we've got 60 feet of, of right-of-way, why we can't at least separate that sidewalk to allow for a more usable sidewalk during the winter months for the reasons that Mr. Prus was just talking about? In other words, it's far more pleasant to walk along a sidewalk that's separated from the roadway than it is to be right attached. So could you please understand why, you know, if, first of all, why only one, and if only one, why we're not separating that? Thanks.
Sure. Actually, it's on the back. restaurants are on the west side. There's really not any, we don't, there's certainly not any pedestrian traffic at the moment, nor do we anticipate any based on current or future development on the east side. In addition, the DCM, yeah. Okay. So here's our proposed section for A Street. So in addition, the Design Criteria Manual only requires it on one side for industrial commercial areas. That's the answer, that's the answer to your first question, in response to your second as far as providing additional separation. That's something that we're looking at and haven't dismissed, so we would take that into consideration. I mean, it is standard for a local road for the sidewalk to be at back of curb, but by no means do we have to do that.
Okay. Well, I just, I'd just given that, perhaps it's something I'll bring up during our, during our action phase, but Madam Chair, I have another question. When I look at the designs shown on, on the next section on, on Forty-Eighth, and maybe this is a bit of a pet peeve of mine, and, but maybe needing some clarification as well, I see a separated path and an attached, or sort of a combination of both, both separated versus separated and attached. And I'm showing, there's a picture of a bicyclist riding along the sidewalk. Number one, I thought it was, it was not permissible by city code for a bike to ride along a sidewalk in a commercial area. So I find it, if that's the case, and hasn't, we haven't amended Title IX, I find that sort of laughable that we've sort of included it there. But number two, there's the real practical reason why, why, I mean, is, is the intent that, that cyclists use the sidewalks in these areas, or I thought, I thought I saw a discussion that by having shoulders, we're actually hoping and encouraging that the bikes would stay off the road and people would stay on the sidewalks like they do in most, most places around the country, albeit here in the, in the winter, things tend to change a little bit.
Yeah. In, in short, I agree with you on all accounts. We were, we were caught by the Bicycle Committee wing of AMATS, and they corrected us and let us know that the bicyclists should not have been on the sidewalk, and that was just oversight on our part. The intent was not to encourage or suggest that bicyclists would be using the five-foot sidewalk. And you're correct that the, the hope with the shoulder, three-and-a-half-foot shoulder in this case, is that bicyclists will actually be there.
Okay. And I, I guess I would say, you know, I'm also open to bicyclists using the sidewalks, but, but it would require probably more than a five-foot sidewalk in that instance, and I, so reconciling that one way or the other, can you just clarify what the, what the bicycling advocates asked, where they, they sort of were fine with the shoulders for their, for their needs?
Correct. They wanted to have that three-and-a-half-foot shoulder, and they did not want parking along Forty-Eighth because of the concern of doors opening and that potential conflict with parked vehicles and bicyclists going by.
And I guess, final question then, since you just brought it up, given that there's so much on-street parking utilized in the general vicinity, why is it that we're confident that we won't need the roadway for, for spillover parking for, for the, for the commercial, the hospital uses in the area?
Currently, Cordova has a lot of on-street parking for anyone who's driven down there. One of the original reasons this project came into fruition was the request of St. Elias and Cornerstone Construction to abandon 50th, the 50th Ave, right-of-way. And of course, part of the agreement was that would be abandoned and, or vacated to the adjacent property owners once the connectivity was achieved by the extension of A Street and Forty-Eighth. Once, and what the, the plan is for Cornerstone and for St. Elias is to use the vacated 50th for additional parking, which will free up Cordova. And there's, currently, we don't see any other demands currently or, or based on future development for on-street parking. The residential areas to the north of Forty-Eighth, assuming they were to be developed despite the wetlands, would be, would be accessed through Koyuk Ave, and that's a residential. And if the property along A Street to the east, in between A Street and St. Elias, would require all of their parking to be on-street. And we don't, and anything, similarly, any development on the Aluptic property, which is to the west of A Street, would require all of their parking to be on-street.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Spring?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you did a good job of incorporating the Bicycle Commuters Association comments regarding Forty-eighth Avenue. And I think it was oversight in the bicycle plan regarding Forty-eighth Avenue, not including it as one of the bicycle routes, probably because there was no link there, and the road didn't continue through, and I don't think they understood that there was that possibility. So I think in hindsight, if the update of, if the bicycle plan was being updated, that Forty-eighth Avenue, which is about a half-mile in between the two major arterials, and there's no other bike facility within a half-mile of that, would have been designated as a share, a lane, a bicycle facility. And your three-and-a-half-foot, I think, shoulder is perfect for that, and that will probably be utilized as a bicycle facility. Couple of things, though. I, I just, the, I have a little problem with chokers with respect to bicycle facilities. Chokers tend to cause bicyclists to have to veer into the line of traffic, even though it's a four-way stop, I believe. That might help out some of the situation, but there is a little potential conflict between bicycles and, and automobiles at those choker facilities. I think there are ways to design around that, like create a through lane through the chokers for a continuation of the shoulder, for instance, goes through. I've seen that kind of design in, in this situation. But I, I guess ultimately, I wonder if there's any, been in, ever been any studies, before and after studies regarding chokers and the effectiveness of the chokers on, on traffic calming? It seems to me that that's probably one of the least effective methods of calming traffic, just from, you know, my, of the observations of it.
Yeah, there have been quite a few studies done, and as we went through the Municipal Traffic Calming Manual, we tried to select the ones that appeared the best, and we gave a brief summary in the design study report on our evaluation, why we chose some over another. And certainly, that's part of the project, is to try to keep speeds low, and a number of comments that we received from the community were concerns about, one, increased traffic, two, increased speeds, and the result from potential cut-throughs. So we're, as part of this project, we're trying to do what we can to deter it. That's the reasoning behind the, the chokers, of course. And there is some documentation, which I can't unfortunately cite right here, but there is documentation on this, this being an effective method for, for calming traffic.
Okay. I guess when I, when we finally make recommendations, I think I'll probably recommend that, coordinate with the, the trail coordinator regarding the susceptibility or the feasibility of adding share-the-road signs to create a new bicycle facility along Forty-eighth Avenue.
Okay.
Commissioner Robinson, are you out of the queue or in the queue?
Out.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ferguson, in or out? All right?
Yeah. One question. When you mentioned the Design Criteria Manual, and you were talking about sidewalks on one side of the road, the Design Criteria Manual was established with minimum...
You're correct.
So if you could establish sidewalks on both sides, not be allowed on the side of the road?
Correct.
The question was, what is your reaction on this? Any secondary, any secondary comments? What are your thoughts on this?
Through the chair, Mr. Ferguson. The commission, well, page three of the, of the staff packet, the department recommends approval of alternative B of the draft design study report for A Street, Forty-eighth Avenue Extension and Upgrade, 51st Avenue to Cordova Street, subject to condition one, to one condition on page three. So the, the planning division is recommending, you know, approval of alternative B of the draft design study report. That's what's the, before the, the commission.
Thank you very much.
I believe in, in answer to your question, Commissioner Ferguson, the commission could postpone if they wanted additional information, or can move for a recommendation to, for this to move forward, or can put some additional conditions on the approval.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there other questions at this time? Commissioner Mulcahy?
Yeah, I guess I just want to make sure, I guess I'm going back to staff. What all is included in alternative B? I've got the sidewalks on both sides on Forty-eighth, I think it is, and on one side of A, is that right? Did I get that backwards? No, I got that right. But does that include the specific on the lighting, the specifics on the neckdown? I didn't, wasn't clear in reading this that that was all included, or will that come with this, with the next level of design?
So on page two of the packet at the top, under discussion, it says, "Three design alternatives were evaluated." That's alternative A is a no-build. Alternative B is the recommended, or preferred recommended, alternative, which is to build these three blocks and follow the, the recommendations in the, for alternative B in the draft design study report. Alternative B modified was still another, or well, I guess, the only other alternative to, that they, they looked at, and it was the same, essentially the same road design, or very similar road design, except it had on-street parking on Forty-eighth Avenue. Now, the bicycle group didn't like that idea, and the design team listened to that and, you know, decided not to go with that.
So I guess my question is, then, some of the issues that we brought up tonight, finalizing where the sidewalk goes, landscape buffers, where the lighting goes, the type of traffic calming, is that part of B, or is that part of the next level of design? Does that all go to the?
Thank you for the question.
Urban Design Commission?
Through the chair, Mr. Mulcahy. The, so the design sheets that are in the back of the, of the report, they lay out alternative B and alternative B modified. And what staff did was it studied that to see if there were any, you know, tweaks or changes that, that, that our department would recommend to improve pedestrian connection, to deal with speedy traffic, you know, studied that. And after reviewing that, we, we didn't have any recommended changes. What's in the report and those, those, I think there are 35 percent design sheets in the back of the, of the, of the packet, that's what we had to review. The next step is the, the site plan and landscape plan at 65 percent will be provided to the Urban Design Commission to review and approve. And there'll be, I think that the, the design team between 35 percent and 65 percent makes quite a bit of refining, and that's all I have.
Ms. McConnell?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Mulcahy?
Okay. Is there any reason why we could not ask to see this at a later time at 65 percent as a consent agenda item?
Madam Chair, there's, there's no reason why we could not provide you with the 65 percent design documents. There's no code authority for you to approve or disapprove of them or recommend changes, but there's no reason that we couldn't provide you with that information.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I have one more cost question for you all. On page seven of your binder shows an existing right-of-way situation. It is, it looks to me as if you did a fair amount of right-of-way acquisition or purchase of property in order to widen that right-of-way. Am I correct?
That was done at some point quite a while ago, not part of, not as part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pruse?
Yeah. Reviewing your, your, your engineer's cost estimate for the construction, looking at the preliminary plans, I don't see any underground utilities reference AWU water and sewer, and I don't see any water and sewer, especially sewer down A Street. Is it anticipated that, that that will be added to service the lots, while the, anyway, I just, I just was curious about that.
Yeah, good, good question. The plan is through a separate design contract with AWU, they, they do wish to provide interconnectivity within their system, so they do plan on tying in their water main on A Street. And it's with a 16-inch water main. There is no plans for them to extend their sewer.
So, so how will A Street lots get their sewer?
The plan is that for any future developers, and it's, and I know that developers now are coordinating with AWU, but future developers would have to install that themselves so that they would have access to AWU's sanitary sewer.
Would this be before the street is upgraded?
The coordination's going on now to avoid any disruption of newly improved streets, yeah. So we're, AWU's coordinating with the contractor, or the developer.
The water will be part of our project.
But, correct. So just to clarify, the water will be part of our project. That is an improvement that AWU wants to make, and any stubouts that are needed to serve adjacent properties will be, will be installed as part of this project. However, that's not the case with the sewer. That will be the developer's responsibility.
So functionality-wise, or I guess execution-wise, if you have a, a third-party, private-party responsible for the sewer from AWU, would they enter some private development agreement and have a third-party do the work, or would they tie it all under one, one contract? Do you anticipate this, this, this being one project, the underground utilities and the road improvements at the same time?
For any sewer main extension that the private developer would want to have completed, they would have to do that before the project began, as a separate, as a separate contract. Yeah, or after, if they could prove that it wasn't going to disrupt the newly improved streets.
Okay. So there is, there's a, the bottom line, there's a coordinated effort, and we shouldn't, hopefully won't see this nice new facility be put in and then dug up a year or two later with, with a sewer main.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair, Commissioner Pruse. Yeah, there'll be an agreement, the Anchorage Waterways for our utility will work with the private, private property owner, excuse me, and just coordinate where they want that stubout located in advance of our project, that any work as, any lateral off those, those mains will be part of our project, as well as the 12-inch, or excuse me, the 16-inch ductile iron pipe for the water system upgrade. And that'll just be on A Street. Everything else is already serviced, so.
All right. Are there any other questions? What is the wish of the commission at this time? Commissioner Ferguson?
In the matter of case 2012-05-6, I move that we approve this draft study with the department recommendations that are included on page three, with the following recommendations. Two, we ask that a landscaping plan be developed that provides for adequate maintenance of the landscaping, put forth and stated in this, because I don't believe we have one there. We also ask that the department look strongly at the construction and engineering and administration and design cost, and, and see what can be done to reduce those. I'm not asking... I'm not asking for a specific amount there, I'm asking them to be looked at. And we ask, thirdly, that at the 65% drawings, at the time it goes before the Urban Design Commission, that those drawings be provided to us as part of our consent agenda, so we can judge your progress on those items.
That's all included in your first, in your motion, in your main motion, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Spring? Do you have a question, comment?
I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. It would state, resolve the need for appropriate bicycle signing along Forty-Eighth Avenue, designating it as a bicycle route.
As a bicycle what?
Bicycle route.
Okay, thank you. I'm from the Midwest, no. Thank you very much. Is that the extent of your recommendation? Yes, all right. Commissioner Ferguson, do you have an objection to that?
I do not, I'd be welcome to accept it.
Okay, and Commissioner Robinson, same for a second? All right, thank you. All right, so we have the motion before us with one, two, three, four additional items. Is there, Commissioner Robinson, are you in the queue?
Yes, I am, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion. I'd like to propose that in Alternative B, A Street, strongly consider a separation of the single sidewalk that's included in that design.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferguson?
I have no objection.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? All right, does anyone have any objections? Seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Thank you.
All right, we're now here for the public hearing, and as it relates to public hearings, the procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meetings is, one, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the Commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes, part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, shall have five minutes, and if you are here to represent a group, please identify the group and your authority to represent the group. Individuals may have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the Commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Any individual may request written findings from any Commission decision within seven days. May we have the staff report, please, on Case 2013-057?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a limited site plan review of a proposed expansion to a large retail establishment in the I-1 district. Costco is proposing a 5,000-square-foot expansion on the east side of their Diamond Boulevard location. This will create additional space for the tire sales and create an additional entrance to the store. This store was built in 1984, prior to the adoption of the section of code regarding large retail establishments, which requires site plan review and design standards. Per AMC 2155-130, the section regarding non-conforming properties, this site is considered to have an approved site plan. However, the applicant is required to apply up to 10% of the cost of the expansion on improvements that will bring the site into conformity with the standards of 215320, the large retail establishment section. Per 2155-130, applications for limited site plan review are to be processed in the same way as a full site, new site plan review, which is why it's bringing forward this case to the Planning and Zoning Commission. According to the cost estimate prepared by the applicant, the total cost of this expansion is $930,000. Therefore, the Commission can require up to $93,000 in improvements to meet the current standards for a large retail establishment. In this case, for the Diamond store, the applicant is proposing to spend $234,000, so much more than the minimum required. But this is because their requirements, that they're counting for improvements, I believe they are also proposing those to meet federal ADA requirements. So, the proposed improvements include an ADA accessible path from the entrance of the store to the bus stop on Diamond Boulevard, ADA accessible parking spaces, and five additional landscape beds that will increase the interior landscaping of the site to 1.7%. The Department finds that the proposed site plan improvements bring the site into greater conformity with the standards for landscaping and pedestrian access for a large retail establishment, per AMC 215320. And the Department finds that the proposed site plan meets the standards for review for a large retail establishment per the non-conforming section, which is on Page Five of the staff report. These improvements do not create an undue economic hardship, and the proposed improvements exceed the 10% threshold, but this is because the applicant is choosing to make ADA improvements to meet federal requirements. The Department recommends approval of the limited site plan review of a proposed expansion to a large retail establishment in the I-1 district, subject to Conditions One through Five on Pages Five and Six of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. I do have a question for you. So, are we the final authority for this site plan review for a large retail establishment, or does this plan go to the Urban Design Commission as well?
Madam Chair, you, of course, they could always appeal, but you are, does not go to the Urban Design Commission.
It does not?
That's right.
So, we're it?
Yes.
Okay, like Walmart on Northern Lights, and, I mean, on Benson, all right. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Dean?
Through the Chair. Now that they're going to reconfigure the parking lot a fair bit in the front with the walkways and things like that, will there be a reduction in parking spaces due to the I don't see any counts of parking spaces before or after on the sheets. Maybe I missed it.
It's in here, it's in here. Yeah. Through the Chair, Commissioner Dean. On Page 37 of the staff packet, it's the applicant's narrative in which they address It says that 575 spaces are required, and they're providing 795.
I was just curious if it was a reduction in what they currently have, but that's okay if you don't know.
I don't know if it's a reduction, but since they were so over their required parking, I wasn't concerned with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. Through the Chair, question for staff. I always struggle with the sort of existing approved site plan, buildings that existed prior to the large retail establishment. And my question is, is, are the improvements or adherence to the section of code dealing with these large retail sites only having to do with the proportionate amount relative to the addition that is going on? Or is, does the addition itself have to comply 100% with the portion of the code? In other words, does the addition have to apply as though it were new, but the remaining area of the site that does not apply, that is presumed to apply, only have to come 10% of the way towards that?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Robinson. This is how, this is my understanding of how to apply that. Since this is an expansion to an existing structure, there's some reasonableness in making that expansion meet the existing exterior aesthetic characteristics, in that if we were to say this expansion to an existing building needs to meet today's standard for aesthetic character, that that would look out of place. And so, our priority with applying the 10% is first to address pedestrian and vehicular traffic. If this was, say, a new standalone building, we would require that that building meet the aesthetic characteristics, as well as apply the 10%.
So, for example, in your view, under 215320P, the aesthetic characteristic piece, if I were to understand what you just told me, then you would feel that the addition does not have to meet those standards?
That is correct. I feel that if they were to do that, it would not make architectural sense, and it would exceed the 10% requirement. So, I do not believe that the addition meets the aesthetic characteristic standards of today.
And your position is, nor does it have to.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Spring?
Through the Chair, staff. There's a couple of questions. There's two site plans before us tonight, and they're basically, they're both Costco stores, one on Diamond, one on DeBar. And I noticed that what I guess is little inconsistency between the two recommendations of the site plans. And the one we'll be seeing, there's a recommendation for 10-foot pedestrian zone in front of the entrance, in front of the driveway, along the front of the store on DeBar. Plus, there's a recommendation for a traffic control plan, or a loading plan to prohibit or eliminate the loading that takes place in front of the store. And I don't see that in this site plan. I was wondering why that wasn't included.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Spring. So, we kind of deal with each case sort of separately on its own merits. And for the Diamond store, the applicant came in the door proposing to make improvements that meet other objectives for site improvements, that being ADA compliance. And the cost for that exceeds the 10% that we are allowed to require. Those improvements seem to us to bring the site into greater conformity and be significant improvements to the site. Are there other things that they could do? Yes, but the improvements that they are proposing exceed the amount, and I think meet the most important objective, which is pedestrian safety. So, we did not ask them to do anything beyond what they came to us proposing because of the cost estimate that they provided us.
Thank you. I have another question for me.
Can I just interrupt and ask a question that's relevant to your comment? Is, don't they have to do the ADA improvements anyway?
Yes, they, I don't, I don't know what, I'm not really an expert on federal ADA compliance. I think that at times, stores that, or retail establishments, commercial establishments that were built prior to ADA, they might have a corporate mission to try to, you know, fix those up, to get them into compliance. It's nothing that the Muni would go out and say, "You need to be in compliance with this today." But even if their improvements are meeting another objective, I don't think it's the municipality's jurisdiction to say, "We're not going to count that because that's going to something else." They're killing two birds with one stone, and we were comfortable with that, meeting the 10% requirement in Muni code.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the Chair. On Page Four of the staff report, you talk about the proposed condition of approval requiring that the five-foot sidewalk that connects the building of the store to Diamond be relocated to the east of the existing landscape bed, and wheel stops be provided in the adjacent parking spaces. My question is, does the site plans that we received reflect that recommendation? And if it doesn't, does that need to be included in the recommendations of approval? It appeared to me that, I couldn't tell, to tell you the truth, it looked like the sidewalk on the site plan was within the planting area, and I'm assuming that it needs to be modified to take it away from the planting bed there, but I'm not sure.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Spring. I apologize that the application packet to you may not be as clear. There was a lot of negotiation and back and forth with the applicant prior to bringing this forward. The, on Page 25 of the staff report, is the sheet which shows the sidewalk being relocated so that it's not in the way of the existing trees. So, the condition of approval, as it's written now, says to relocate it, relocate the sidewalk to Diamond Boulevard to the east of the existing landscape bed, as shown on Sheet SD101 dated 4/26/2013, and that references this page here.
Okay, I see that. And follow-up, is that, were calculations made to see that the parking stalls were still met requirements, and the backup space were met requirements? Because in putting the sidewalk adjacent to the planting bed, I'm assuming that they didn't use excess space in their parking lot design, an extra five feet. I don't know where that five feet came from, I guess. Is that a problem with the parking?
They had extra space in that area.
Okay. One other question. The, I think there's a minor error on the citation of the plans that you listed on Page Six, the last one, that's Costco Wholesale Sheet DD11. You say ADA, and I believe that should be 08, just to clarify that for the record, I think. You could look that up later if you want. One other, last question, I'm sorry to ask for my questions, I didn't mean to do that. In the comments by Lori Skanki, the Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator, that you, I don't see any comment on two of her recommendations. One is short sidewalk connection at grade, connecting the bicycle path at C Street to the parking lot of Costco, and also the recommendation for landscaping along that area on the west boundary of the parking lot.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Spring again. When we got the information, at first, we didn't have a cost estimate, and we asked for that when we got the cost estimate and saw that the proposal included, or that the proposed improvements exceeded the 10% that we were allowed to require, we did not continue to pursue additional site improvements beyond that 10%. So, those would add additional cost, and so we did not pursue those.
Commissioner Spring, do you have any further comment? All right, Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, ma'am. First, on the sheet that Commissioner Spring just mentioned, DD1108, it mentions that there's existing 797 stalls, and after this, there'll be 780 stalls. So, that answers your question, Commissioner Dean. So, that answers your question, Commissioner Dean. On page six of Staff Recommendations, Recommendation Number Five, snow shall be hauled off-site within 72 hours. After going through the snow wars of Title 21, I'm very sensitive to that, do we have any authority to make that request? They've got snow storage that they're using, that's on a contiguous site. I don't, I'm not comfortable asking them to haul off snow if it doesn't interfere with the operation. They have excess parking, they meet the parking minimums, so I wonder why that requirement is there.
Through the Chair, Commissioner Ferguson. So, just a couple of references. In their narrative that they provided on page 37, they state that snow will be plowed and removed from the site. It's my opinion that if an applicant wants to make that statement, that removing the snow from the site is actually, helps the aesthetic character, there can be very large snow piles that accumulate that, you know, really block the vision. So, they made that statement, and I carried that forward as a condition of approval. And in the large retail establishment standards, there is a standard for snow storage or removal because, again, we're normally looking at very large sites that can end up with very large snow piles. And so, what that section says is that a plan for snow storage or removal from the site shall be submitted and approved. The sidewalks for snow storage shall, use of sidewalks for snow storage shall be prohibited. Use of landscape areas may be allowed. The Commission may impose such restrictions on snow removal operations as necessary to reduce the effects of noise or traffic. That's what the section says.
I have no objection, and I agree with your, if the applicant volunteers that you have, you've got every right to put it in. I don't disagree with that. I wonder if there's not a concern with the word "site." I'm looking on Sheet DD1108. I am familiar with this site, it's where I shop and get gas for my truck. There's Costco, and there's Toys R Us, and there's a vacant parking area, striped asphalted parking area there on the corner of Diamond and King. Now, looking at this thing, I'm confused with what I'm interpreting as a property line that goes around this thing, and then there's what looks like another property line coming diagonally through this lot. And so, I guess I'm letting the applicant know when they testify, I'm going to ask what they mean by "removed from site" because they could mean just be moving it from parking in front of Costco over to this vacant parking area now that they're using. If that's what they're planning, if that is what they meant by "removed from site," or whether they're taking what I'm presuming your definition was in removing it from the greater site. So, I've got a question there, but I do not have an objection to what you just pointed out, though. No further questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is now open with the petitioner's representative. Please come forward.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Tanya Hickok, H-I-C-K-O-K, with Dowell, H-K-M. With me tonight are representatives from Costco and the project architect Mulvaney G2, Kim Katz and Bob Ripley with Costco, and Ed Galloway with Mulvaney G2, and they can answer any specific questions you may have of them. As Karen stated, the application before you tonight is for a limited site plan review for a 5,000-square-foot addition for a tire center. As you probably know, they sell tires inside of the warehouse, and that, those tire sales will then move into this new location to open out for other merchandise. The building was constructed back in 1984, and it's important to note that this is the 10th Costco constructed, where now they have over 600 worldwide, so it was a very early store for them. And at that time, it was before the 2001 Large Retail Establishment Ordinance for Title 21. In addition, with the proposed Tire Center, we are proposing over $200,000 of site improvements, that's over 20% of the building improvement costs for the Costco Tire Center. It does include the landscaping as well as ADA improvements, as well as some glass door vestibules, adding some glass doors to the existing vestibules. It won't be heated additionally, but it will provide some comfort during the winter months when you have the sliding doors. We have reviewed all the conditions as proposed by Ms. Iverson, and we don't have any objections as written. I would like to clarify the snow storage, Mr. Ferguson, if I may. And when I, I believe when we wrote it, it meant from the main part of the parking for the site, but we will be using any additional parking that we have as for snow storage on the greater site. If you look at the parcel details, there's multiple parcels owned by Costco under a common development, and so, they will remain in other portions that are not used for parking. And with that, I'd be able to save my time for rebuttal and have any other questions you may have.
Are there questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Ferguson?
My question is to staff, does her, is the applicant's explanation adequate to meet your requirement five on page six, or do we need additional dialogue?
Through the Chair, Commissioner Ferguson. In the applicant's narrative, when it states that snow will be plowed and removed from the site, I interpret that to mean the site which is being approved for a large retail establishment, which is all of the property that is owned by Costco. And so, it is my intent, when I forward that into the conditions of approval, that the snow shall be hauled off-site within 72 hours, that it would be removed from all of the property owned and controlled by Costco.
If I can propose an amendment to the condition as written? Well, we can certainly hear what you might suggest, but amendments have to come from the Commission.
Go ahead. Snow shall be hauled off in excess of municipal code-required parking areas.
Thank you. I had a question. I had on my chair this Costco locations with pictures, did that, did that come from?
No, I had that research done online.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Is that your only question at this time?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, in looking at, I have a couple of questions. In looking at the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pruse.
Just real quickly on your snow, is it Costco's practices now to stack the snow on the property for as long as they can until such a time when the volume exceeds the capacity?
Yes.
And where that snow is stacked, is, I assume it's an approved designated area on the property? And there's been drainage engineering done for where that snow is so that that volume of snow?
It's an existing condition, and I don't believe there were, as far as my knowledge, there have been no drainage complaints during further snow melt.
I didn't ask about complaints, I asked, is, when you, where the snow is stacked, is there any issue? Has there been any drainage study? Does, where does it go? Because it's a very large parking lot, and depending on if you're, if you can take 250 parking spaces, that's a lot of volume of snow that you could put someplace. And I'm just curious about the drainage patterns on the property, and when it does melt, where does it, where does it go? If someone can show me that on a site plan, does it go into a storm system? Does it go off-site into a ditch? Just, what do we have?
I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head, but I would assume that when it was originally constructed, drainage was reviewed and approved at that time. I can see if I can find a grading plan.
Well, you suggested a hauled off excess, with the caveat, "excess Muni Code Act areas," and so, right now, they're recommending that all of it be hauled off within 72 hours. And so, I'm trying to come up with, it says, "Snow shall be hauled off," recommendation "snow shall be hauled off within 72 hours." And you're asking, you suggested excess, in excess of Muni Code areas.
So, in the areas that municipal requires parking, we will make sure that that remains clear.
So, how many parking spaces will that, you will stack snow on?
Approximately 200-some stalls.
Okay. And are you doing that now on those 200 stalls?
Yes.
Okay. Are you doing any more than 200 stalls?
Not that we know of. It's not clear.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions? Well, I have a couple of questions, and some comments. I did a little research online, and I came up with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight Costco locations. Two in Washington, two in Oregon, two in Arizona, two, one in California, and one in Honolulu. And I have to say that they all look much more attractive architecturally than the store that was number 10 and that is on Diamond Boulevard. We had a former mayor at one point in time, and he said that our community is judged by the commercial buildings that are built, that we see the commercial buildings, we don't always see the subdivisions in the streets and the houses. And if we were to judge our community by the store that's on Diamond Boulevard, I think we would rank 48th or 49th in the state, as far as states are concerned, because it really does need a lot of improvement. It is disappointing to me that Costco, which has an excellent reputation for product and service, would use the ADA requirement as part of its 10%. Whether or not it is appropriate or legal as far as the interpretation of staff is concerned, as far as meeting the 10%. When I look at the landscaping, the photos of the landscaping, it is very disappointing. It is obvious that there has been no attempt to maintain the existing landscaping and vegetation at this store. And I guess my question to Costco and Costco's petitioner is, how does Chandler, Arizona, and Citrus Heights, California, and Hillsborough, Oregon, get attractive stores, and we get the bottom of the barrel? How is that? How does that happen?
Ed Galloway, Mulvaney G2 Architecture. Galloway is G-A-L-L-I-W-A-Y. I appreciate the comment. Obviously, this store being built in 1984, architecture, the community, Costco was a lot different in those times than they are today. Had we, the stores you quoted were our recent builds within the last five to 10 years, I've personally been involved in a few of them. So, had we been in a position where we were building from a ground up at this location, we probably would, you probably would be, based on current codes and current zoning ordinances, would have a much more attractive building. Our intent on this particular warehouse with this small of an expansion was to try to make the architecture blend in to the existing facility as to not, I guess, draw attention to the building and create a further eyesore. So, this is why we've proposed essentially matching the architecture of the existing facility at this point in time.
So, are you familiar, there's another example of an older building here in town on Northern Lights, the Northern Lights Mall where the Alaska Club is, and recently it underwent a change in ownership, and, you know, they did some really simple things. They added some big timbers to the building. It wasn't, they kept the basic structure, they didn't, they didn't move any walls, or I don't even think they changed the skin. But they did some very attractive things to make it a lot more attractive. And then, when Walgreens went in, they followed that similar architecture, and you really have an opportunity to set a standard here. And, you know, I don't, I don't buy the idea that, that because it is quote an eyesore that you're just trying to minimize the eyesore. That doesn't make really good sense to me. I think there are lots of things that you could do for the facade that would, that would demonstrate that you care about this community architecturally and not hide behind the ADA requirement that you have to, that you have to fulfill anyway, I believe, in order to meet your 10%. I think it's disappointing. Commissioner Pruse?
I'd like to go back just real quickly on the snow. Could you show me where you're going to stack, where you stack the snow currently?
Costco currently owns property that extends over in front of Toys R Us or Babies R Us, and they have some parking here that is not, used as often as parking closer to the front door, so I believe that's where they currently stack their snow. So, yeah, right where his finger's pointing there.
Does that see, read point 02? Is that?
DE1108 is what I'm looking at.
Which one? I don't know. 1108. Okay, well, I guess my concern is, is that, you know, the staff is recommending a 72 hours to remove the snow, and you're asking to remove the snow in excess of Muni Code and put the existing snow on excess parking spaces. But in order for me to make a decision about that, I don't know what the drainage is or where exactly you, where you're proposing to put that. Not that I don't disagree with what you're proposing, but it's, it's, it's a dilemma for me because, because if I know where you're putting it, I can see where the storm drain is and where the storm drain goes, it would solve, it would answer a really quick question that, that the capacity, as the snow melts, that it has someplace to go, and we're not impacting other properties or the, or traffic, or people, pedestrians, or any of that kind of stuff.
We would be happy to resolve that with, you know, small engineering on the drainage and the location of the, of the snow, if we wanted to add that to that condition.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, through the Chair. Can you confirm for me that there's sufficient space in front of the store along, in addition to the travel lanes that would be needed for a 10-foot wide pedestrian zone?
I believe currently, we have a 30-foot drive aisle, so that would remain a 6-foot pedestrian zone.
The requirement would be for what, for 10, 10-foot lanes, for 12-foot lanes? You're saying 12-foot lanes? You're saying 12-foot lanes?
Two-way, 24 feet. So the remainder would be 6-foot pedestrian.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? You have 7 minutes and 57 seconds left for your rebuttal.
I was going to speak to the snow storage thing, I guess, one more time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We have to have a public hearing first. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify? Anyone here at all? All right. Seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is closed. Now you have 7 minutes and 57 seconds left for your rebuttal.
Yeah, I guess, speaking to the snow storage issue one last time. Costco is very sensitive to their parking needs. And so, especially during high season, Christmas, Thanksgiving, those types. So it's their best interest to keep the parking lot clear as much as possible of snow. There are down times when the parking lot isn't as full as those holiday seasons. And so, those are the type of times, I believe, that Tanya was alluding to, where excess snow, where if we could keep snow on-site and only eliminate the snow when it exceeds the minimum. Regarding the drainage questions, the site is obviously set up to drain. I haven't heard of any maintenance issues or drainage issues that have come up on that site, but we can dig into that a little bit further and answer that question if you'd like.
All right. Do you have any other comments? You have 7 minutes left. No? All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Spring, you're in the queue. You have a motion to amend? No?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right.
Motion to amend is...
Well, first, we have to have a main motion.
That's my thought.
Yep. All right. But I saw here a motion to amend. Can you clear the screen? All right. Thank you very much. May I have a motion for approval, please? Commissioner Ferguson.
In the matter of case 2013-057, Costco Wholesale Corp. on Diamond, I make a motion that we approve, including staff's recommendations, 1 through 5, on pages 5 and 6 of the staff packet, modifying Condition 5 to read, "Snow shall be hauled from the required parking areas within 7," no, "Snow shall be removed from the required parking areas within 72 That's what basically the requirement they're working on under now is. And so, I don't see a reason to change it. I see that I've got a second, so I'm going to continue that I understand, no, I understand Madam Chair's comments and concerns, and I hope the applicant understood those very clearly. I believe this is one of the most, at one time, had one of the largest volumes of Costco stores, so possibly they could afford to do something more here. But my recommendation is for approval with modifications to requirement number 5 only.
Thank you. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Mulkey. Do you agree with the recommendations? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Pruse.
Yeah. I understand where Commissioner Ferguson's coming from here, and I don't disagree with being able to take the excess snow and putting someplace. However, we do not know where those excess spaces are in relationship to the parking scenario that they have on-site. And we don't know if it's multiple places, or just they're going to use one place. So I would like to offer a suggestion that they resolve with staff the location, the exact location, of where they're going to stack that snow on the excess, on the unusable or excess parking spaces, so that there's someplace designated on the property that they're doing it.
I thought that was covered under Recommendation 3, little i, little 3i, delineate a temporary snow storage area. I thought that already, that was covered.
But that is for snow that's going to be there 72 hours or less. This is more like permanent storage until springtime.
Seasonal.
Yeah. Based on this fall, or the spring's permanent.
I have no problem with Mr. Pruse's recommendation. I accept it.
In the form of an amendment? Or a clarification of the amendment?
I was going to say clarification.
Clarification of the, all right. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Spring, do you have a comment or an amendment?
Two amendments, one very minor. One, resolve with municipality of Anchorage Traffic Engineering the need for and width of a pedestrian zone, as well as posted signs prohibiting loading and parking in front of the store. And the second one is just a minor editorial correction to the reference to sheet DD11-88. I believe it should be DD11-08.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other motions? Any other comments? Well, I'm going to follow my sword. I'm not going to be supporting this motion. I do not agree with staff regarding the ADA compliant as counting as part of the 10%. And I have no faith whatsoever that the landscaping is going to be maintained and once it's installed, without appropriate bonding, to make sure that that occurs. So I will not be supporting the motion. So would you please use your machines? This motion is 5 to, 5 to 2, and so it's approved. All right. Thank you. May we have some findings?
The applicant has demonstrated their ability to follow the requirements of the code, and they've addressed the parking. They have provided the needed access, pedestrian access to Diamond Avenue. And I think, so I think it should be approved.
All right. Thank you very much. Anything else? All right. Moving on to the next case, 2013-058, Costco Wholesale Corporation. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this again is a limited site plan review of a proposed expansion to a large retail establishment in the B3SL district. Costco is proposing a 3,500-square-foot expansion on the west-facing side of their DeBar location. This will create additional space for tire sales and one additional lift bay for tire installation. This property is zoned B3SL, and the special limitations required a public hearing site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The site plan was originally approved in 1991 for the main store and amended in 1998 to allow the gas station. Even though there was a site plan review by the Planning Commission, since the store was developed prior to the adoption of our large retail establishment standards, those did not apply. Per the Nonconforming Section 2155-130, the applicant is required to apply up to 10% of the cost of the expansion on improvements that bring the site into conformity with the standards of AMC 215320. The existing layout of the main entrance on the west side of the store provides no protection for pedestrians entering or exiting the store. Upon exiting the store, patrons are immediately in the drive aisle of the parking lot. There is an apron of concrete along the facade, but it is not effective for creating a safe pedestrian zone for the following reasons. First, the apron is at grade. Second, the material change from asphalt to concrete is very difficult to distinguish, especially in winter. And third, the apron is only three feet wide in some locations. This creates a no-man's land and is a dangerous co-mingling of pedestrian and vehicular traffic. I provided several photos on pages 10 through 15 of the staff packet. Currently, the drive aisle along the west storefront is 40 feet wide. The minimum drive aisle width for parking lots required under code is 24 feet wide. Therefore, there is ample space to widen this area dedicated to pedestrians. After a variety of proposals and discussions with the applicant, the final proposal by the applicant is as follows. One, to stripe the pedestrian area in front of the west-side entrance. To add signs to the pedestrian area indicating no parking and no loading. The store management will enforce the prohibition on parking and loading in front of the west entrance. To move their, other things that the applicant has proposed is to move their tractor trailers from the southeast corner of the site to a less prominent location. They've also proposed to replace speed bumps along the drive aisle to the south of the building, which have worn down. And they will provide two ramps along the main sidewalk to the west of the store, so patrons of shopping carts can utilize the sidewalk to return to their cars. And finally, they propose to re-stripe key pedestrian intersections. The applicant has provided a cost estimate, which indicates that the proposed improvements will cost $54,400, which is 5.9% of the cost of the expansion. Per AMC 2155-310, the commission can require the applicant to spend up to 10% of the cost of the expansion on improvements that bring the site into conformity. 10% of the cost of the expansion would be $96,800. This standard ensures that the cost of the improvements is proportional to the cost of the expansion. The "up to" language in this section of the code implies that it is not required to spend the full amount if opportunities for improvement create economic hardship. Given that the proposed improvements by the applicant are less than 10% of the cost of the shell construction, the commission may require up to $39,400 of additional improvements in order to meet the standards of AMC 2150-320. The department finds that the proposed site plan improvements bring the site into greater conformity with the standards for pedestrian access and outdoor storage for a large retail establishment. We also found that the improvements as proposed and conditioned in our conditions of approval do not create an undue economic hardship and bring the site into greater conformity with 2150-320. I will also just point out that another condition that we have included is that, prior to the certificate of occupancy, the applicant conduct a landscape inspection and replace any dead, dying, or misshapen trees as approved by current planning per the 1991 approved landscape plan. So with all of that information, the department recommends approval of the site plan review of a proposed expansion to a large retail establishment, subject to Conditions 1 through 7, on pages 7, 8, and 9 of the staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff? All right. Then the public hearing is open, and we may hear from the petitioner's representative.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Tanya Hickok, H-I-C-K-O-K, with L-H-K-M. Again, with me is Costco and Mulvaney G2 to answer any specific questions you may have. As Karen stated, this is a limited site plan review application. This is a slightly smaller addition. It's 3,500 square feet for the Tire Center. And differently than the Diamond Store, this was constructed in 91, a little bit later. And it already went through a site plan review at Planning and Zoning. It was a requirement of, a special limitation of the rezone of that property. Two years ago, Costco came in and did some ADA improvements, and those cost over $110,000, as well as they had done some fence upgrades. So that's all outside of this improvement. And to clarify, we had done a more current cost estimate, which I can hand out, but it is actually $62,000, not the $54,000 that Karen had mentioned, as well as all the no loading and no parking additional signage. Costco does have a policy in place for large purchases, for Costco personnel to go out and assist the customers in loading. So those would be the only exception to the no-loading requirement. We went through several iterations, as Karen has mentioned, on what type of improvements to put on-site. Do we stripe? Do we put in concrete? Do we put in bollards? Do we put in benches? There's a maintenance issue when you put in bollards. Then there's the snow issue during six months out of the year. How do you delineate the differential? There's an issue of carts. These are fairly large carts, as we all know, that push through the Costco entry, and so it's not feasible to have a 6-inch curb, raised curb in those areas. So we had lots of different issues that came up, that we were trying to work through and try to figure out what the best means of how to reach our 10% improvements for the site. And so what before you tonight is what we, after back and forth, have proposed, to put in striping, additional speed bumps, additional crosswalk striping in areas, as well as some additional ramp. If you frequent this store, there's an east-west pedestrian pathway that goes down to the south parking lot, and there is no ramps currently. And so we've proposed additional two ramps to make easier for the customers in order to access the parking stalls to the south. You'll notice the architecture on this Costco is slightly better than the Diamond Store. Hopefully, you recognize that, as well as the different color variations on the roof. And so, we tried to focus on best we could on what site improvements we could bring forward. So with that, I believe we would save the rest of our time for rebuttal, or any questions that you had.
Commissioner Ferguson has a question.
What is your plan for snow?
Can we copy the last condition?
Are you planning to store, how do you put space here to store it?
And they do have additional space on-site to store it. And I believe the location that they store the snow on this site is on the southeast corner of the site.
Commissioner Dean.
Through the Chair. One of the things that I think we just overlooked just now on the previous plan, and potentially on this plan, is that you guys don't, you use your trailers on your site for storage. You've chosen not to have a warehouse because it's expensive, so instead, you have a huge variety of trailers sitting in your lots. So those are taking up a fair amount of parking spaces. So I think that's something that we should explore, because when I look, I'm thinking, you know, I mean, that's a lot of parking spaces. Why don't you start counting them?
Yes. And that is something that we've been discussing in detail, as far as what's actually stored in those trailers, and the possible location of relocating them to the east of the building, behind the building, so that you wouldn't see them as you're driving along on the bar. And I believe what we're storing in there is for vendors, is that correct? Vendor storage in the trailers? And that the vendors come along and then take the trailer away?
Again, Ed Galloway, Mulvaney G2 Architecture. G-A-L-L-I-W-A-Y. It's our understanding, warehouse manager's here with us today, and he can elaborate on this a little bit more, but the storage trailers have been removed. There are currently a couple of storage trailers on-site right now, because they're doing a small remodel inside the store. And so it's construction staging for that. And then, I think, I believe the intent is to, working with staff on this project, is to eliminate that, keeping those trailers on-site for long periods of time. So. So, and if they are to be on-site, we're going to relocate them to an area that's a little bit more attractive or out of the way, out of view.
The location on Diamond currently has 15 trailers on it on this particular Google map that I'm looking at. Not sure exactly when the photo was taken. If I look at the one on Burgah, it's, I would say it's roughly the same. And that's not including trailers that are in the slots at the truck bays. Almost every single truck bay has a trailer in it. Other retailers in town have caught flak with the city for using those trailers as storage on their lots. Walmart, for instance, Fred Meyer, both of them have gotten into hot water about it. I'm concerned, you know, now we're going ahead and saying, gee, we can go ahead and give up a bunch of spots, but you're really using those spots to use them for storage. So to not consider that as part of it isn't totally fair.
Good evening. My name is Bob Ripley, R-I-P-L-E-Y. I'm the general manager for DeBar Costco, and I can speak on the containers that we have on-site right now. We have, today, we have three currently with equipment in it. We're doing a refrigeration remodel on the interior of the building, has condensers and walls. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with that particular building, but if you went in today, you'd see a new cooler box going up in the back, and it's housing a lot of that equipment. A lot of times, the containers that you see in that southeast corner are empty. In fact, what happens is we have 10 bay doors in the back. The trailers will be emptied at night. Those empty containers are pulled by a trucking company and staged in that corner. And after the recommendations of getting rid of those containers, we have worked with the local company, Weaver Brothers, to not store those throughout the day, to alleviate those parking spots.
Should we consider adding an amendment to put rules to the amount of trailers and how long they can stay there? I understand Weaver Brothers, you know, they have their lots where they store their trailers, and I know they want to spot their trailers and keep them there for a certain period of time, and they don't have drivers 24 hours a day, and trailers get unloaded all night long, I'm sure, at your location. So there would have to be, you know, a limitation that a trailer can't sit for X amount of time and that sort of thing. But we might want to look at that. And honestly, I would have to go back and look at the one at Diamond that we just did because we could. Do we have 24 hours?
You have 24 hours to move for reconsideration. Is that what you're speaking to?
I'm just kind of discussing it. Maybe we can go into committee of the whole and discuss whether we want to. I'm throwing it out there. Maybe I'm exceeding what we want to do, but...
Commissioner, please.
A couple of things on the trailer. I think one of the issues, I think it's code that they can't be stored to begin with. I think one of the issues are is that we're served by barges and shipping companies, and they don't come every day. They're usually two times a week, depending on which yard. And so there is going to be, regardless, any facilities is going to have a short-term storage of trailers. That's just the way it works. When the barges come in, I would assume a similar thing would happen. If it was Weaver Brothers or Carlisle, they would pull trailers to you, grab the empty ones that have been there for three days or four days when the last container ship came in, and pull the other ones back. That's efficient for both the trucking company and the vendor. That's just an observation. I would like to, though, on a couple of things. One, you mentioned snow storage. Let me back up first of all. Out of curiosity, your DeBar, is it DeBar? Is it not DeBar?
Yes.
Your DeBar store and your Diamond store, where do they rank in revenue as far as on individual stores through your system?
In a region or company-wide?
Company-wide.
Company-wide, the Diamond location's in the top 15, and the DeBar location's in the top 50 out of the 630 locations worldwide.
Okay. You mentioned about having excess capacity for parking. Do you know how many spaces you have so that we can get an idea? Again, you're trying to, you know, you're trying, you want to do something different than what staff recommends on the 72 hours. I would like to get a flavor of how big the area is and where there is, so I know if we consider that.
Dana, in the package, required parking is 548, and the new plan is 712.
So roughly 170?
Yeah, 170.
Yeah. So could you tell me where they're located at, just real quickly, so I don't have to dig through it? Where would you propose to put the snow?
I currently store the snow in the extreme southeast corner, right next to the storage containers that were in the Google map. My estimation today, I mean, obviously, the snow has melted in the last few weeks, but I'm, it's approximately 50 parks that it's occupying today.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of comments and questions, please. First, I guess, question is, as I look exiting the west elevation, we're showing, it looks like pedestrian connections that extend into the handicapped areas. Is that right? And they extend, I don't know, 10, 12 spaces in, and then they just end? Is that the plan? I don't quite understand it.
Yes. There's a small required ADA walkway between, in between the ADA stalls where they're head-on, and so this walkway separates those two for pedestrian safety. So the ADA or the patron won't have to travel behind the car to get to the warehouse.
So, okay for women with children and everybody else to travel behind the car, but not ADA?
That's the ADA law, yeah.
So it would seem then if you had sufficient width to do that within the ADA stalls, you would be able to extend those through the length of the parking aisle if you chose to do so?
We would have to look at that. I don't believe that we would meet the city's standards on parking without reconfiguring the parking lot entirely to accommodate that. That's similar to what the issue we had in Diamond. When we reconfigured that parking lot, we had to, that's why we lost several stalls and...
But if you can, excuse me, if you can extend it in front of the ADA spaces, why wouldn't you be able to extend it through the non-ADA spaces?
The ADA spaces, first of all, there's a bit of an overhang that we're allowed, and then the, I'd have to look at the parking stall dimensions, the required parking stall dimensions that the city has on that. Typically, we're 10-foot stalls by 20-foot deep. I believe that's consistent, fairly consistent with city standards. And so adding a five-foot walkway or a six-foot walkway between stalls decreases the stall depth and/or the adjacent drive aisle.
Yeah, I guess I understand the issue and the challenge. I just think that if you're able to extend it through the ADA spaces, you're likely able to extend it through the other spaces. The ADA cars are no longer, the spaces are no longer than a standard space. Couple other comments, I guess, that I would make. I would echo, in disclosure, I shop at this store, so I'm pretty familiar with it, and I do think that some of staff's comments on how that entryway works, I think, will assist. I do think it gets very confusing and sort of haphazard in front of the store. I don't know where there's carts and cars stopped up in front of it. And I think my biggest issue is if you were parking on the south side of the lot, if you will, and trying to cross over from the south side of the lot to enter in through the main western entrance, it's not really clear where you should cross. And I, you know, I often just kind of zigzag, and if I'm with my kids, I kind of hold them pretty tight when we move across there because you can either move across to the sidewalk and then move towards the store, but most people end up just kind of zagging somewhere towards the corner because there isn't anything marked or sort of recommended there. There's no clear delineation of where pedestrians should go. So I guess that would be my number one. If you were looking for ideas to use, you know, to come up to your 10% and had an idea and just ran out of ideas on how to come into better conformance and a better functioning site, I think that would be my first recommendation. The second is on the addition itself. When I read, again, I appreciated our conversation with staff earlier, but as I read that, "under aesthetic characteristics, the site plan shall ensure buildings have complexity at street level with human scale by providing features such as changes in building form at entrances and providing windows, enhanced trim, and architectural detail." I recognize that you're doing some of that at the main entrance of the store, but on the addition, frankly, all you're doing is extending the brick, the concrete wall, and putting a small door all the way down towards the bays. So both when you look at the south elevation and the little bit of building that now extends out, and then you look at the western elevation of the new addition, there's nothing there. And it would strike me, I understand retailers like to use wall space for stuff, but I also know that people that work in there, and there's plenty of tire shops in town where there's lots of windows, and you look in and you see the merchandise, and I can't, I find it hard to believe that you can't figure out a couple of other, you know, windows or something that would make that a more pleasing facade and bring people around to that entry. So I'm not sure where I'm headed with this yet, but it concerns me that you haven't looked to sort of come up to, into conformance. It's not, the 10% isn't a huge number, and I think, given that there are some issues with the site, I would have liked to see you make an effort to get there.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Are there any other comments? Then I would entertain a motion. Oh, is there a public hearing? Oh, my goodness. It's, all right. So the public hearing is now open. Is there someone here who would like to testify? Would that person please come forward? All right, seeing and hearing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Yes?
Can I get rebuttal?
Yes, you have seven minutes for rebuttal.
I believe in hearing Commissioner Robinson that we would probably be amenable to adding some sort of condition of approval where we work with staff to bridge the gap, so to speak, for that 10%, be it in some other site amenity or looking, you know, at a window. I mean, I don't know what we could offer for the additional 10% right off the top of our heads, but we could definitely be amenable to working with staff to bridge that gap. And if we wanted to add that as a condition of approval, I believe we would be amenable to that.
Do you have any other comments? You still have 6 minutes and 16 seconds left.
I believe it would be also amenable to adding any other conditions of approval, be it the loading, trailers, those type of amenities to make it more friendly for the community.
All right. Too bad we couldn't do that in the Diamond Store. Yeah. All right. Anything else?
Just, I guess, respond to the comment you made a minute ago about the windows and stuff inside the building there. We recognize that, you know, Costco has some pretty significant security concerns with adding windows and glazing. It doesn't function for them. The building, including the addition that we're proposing, does, will have several skylights that we'll be adding to the building to give natural light into the space. We are adding an entry door within the overhang of the canopy, the covered canopy, that has glazed doors, so there'll be some natural light coming in from there as well. I understand your concern with the facade and the breakup of that wall. It's just a weird spot because it's tire install, or tire sales. And so, just like the rest of the warehouse, it's high piled storage inside the building, and adding windows and facade treatment just doesn't seem functional to us, so we haven't proposed that. Thank you.
Thank you. What is the wish of the commission at this time? Commissioner Robinson.
In the matter of case 2013-058, Costco Wholesale Limited Site Plan Review for the East Anchorage store, I move to approve with staff recommendations listed on pages 7, 8, and 9.
Thank you. May I, Commissioner Robinson, you're in the queue?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm offering the main motion. I'd like to state that I'm not going to support the main motion without amendments, but I'd, rather than try to offer them myself, I figure we could just offer them one at a time.
After. All right. Thank you very much. Seconded by Commissioner Mulkey. All right, thank you very much. Are there amendments? Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to require Costco come into, basically utilize the requirements of the code to come up to 10% of the cost of the expansion towards site improvements. And what I would recommend that they utilize that remaining funding for is twofold. One would be to improve the pedestrian access from the southern parking area to the western main entrance of the store where there is currently no sort of pedestrian suggested crossing. Two would be to add visual interest or at least some facade treatment to the west elevation of the expansion.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey, do you support that motion?
Amendment, I'm sorry. It's, I've had a long day. So I need a second. And Ms. Dean, you second? All right. And Commissioner Mulkey, you have no objection?
Second.
So you don't have to. You're irrelevant. You are never irrelevant. All right. Commissioner Ferguson.
On condition seven...
Is there any objection to the amendment?
Madam Chair, I would just clarify that what I'm asking them to do is resolve with staff, although I think it would be totally within our purview to also request that they come back with a change as well, but that is my motion.
That, you want them to come back, or you don't?
No, that I'm just asking that they resolve with staff.
Resolve with staff. All right, thank you. All right.
Just a quick question for the motion. Tyler, you're suggesting that they look at those things. I totally support the south parking access. I've got, I'm not clear on what they can do with, but you're saying, just suggest and work it out.
Do something.
You're not requiring that they do the two, just work it out.
If I may, Madam Chair, I mean, I don't have a, I mean, I've drawn a pedestrian crossing from, you know, somewhere from the drive aisle that lines up, you know, directly with the sidewalk or the, you know, area that runs within, you know, in front of the store. The problem is, of course, there's no pedestrian kind of parallel on that side of the street. I don't know how to fix it. I don't want to try to come up with something right here, but I think it's a problem, and I think it's something that, given that it's certainly within our purview to make improvements here, that we should ask the professionals to come up with something. I, you know, I also am sensitive to timelines and construction season and everything else, but I, you know, I would like, I think someone that's creative that understands the problem could come up with something. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Mulkey, are you still in the queue, or are you out, you're out of the queue? All right, thank you very much. So Commissioner Ferguson.
I have a motion.
Any objections to the amendment?
No.
No, no objections to the amendment. All right, very good. The amendment is added to the main motion. All right, Commissioner Ferguson.
On recommendation seven, so what we talked about on the other side, I would like to move that we revise it to read, "Snow shall be removed from the required parking within 72 hours to be consistent." And I also point out that they have roughly 150 extra parking spaces.
All right, thank you very much. That is your motion to amend, and may I have a second? Do I have a... Do I have a second for that? Commissioner Malkay, is there objection to the amendment? Seeing and hearing none, that amendment is approved. Are there any other amendments to the main motion? Ms. Dean.
I'm open on this. I do not feel like this is set in stone, but would it be possible to add, I don't know how you guys feel, about adding something that says, "Storage containers can stay no more than 72 hours onsite and no more than five containers parked outside of truck loading dock at any given time?"
All right. Thank you.
I'm open, though. Looking for suggestions, so if anybody has a slight variation on that.
Commissioner Ferguson and then Commissioner Pruse.
I understand your concern, but the practicality, as Dana pointed out earlier, about the way freight comes into this town and the way freight gets handled in this town, I don't, I will not be supporting that motion because I just don't think it can work.
Commissioner Pruse.
Yeah, I think, you know, storage, I think it's already in code what can be stored there, not, but when you're, you know, the difference between storage, a container for items for sale for revenue versus storage for items for improvement are different, and you would never know the difference on the trailer. And so I just think it adds to the confusion. I think that if there's a problem with storage on the site, I think, you know, code should take care of that, and that's something I don't want to legislate. So I wouldn't support that either, just for that reason. If we could figure out a way to zoom in exactly on that, I would probably support it, but I don't see a way to do it.
All right. Commissioner Malkay.
Similar thoughts. It's, I think there's already code that controls this. I'm not sure they've been in compliance with it, but I think there's already code. And then item 3A7, the new location, commercial travel, trailer parking area, it kind of gets to where you're heading, so I think we're covered.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other motions to amend? All right. We're back to the main motion. And that was made by Commissioner Robinson and Commissioner Malkay. Is there any objection to the motion? I'm actually going to vote for this motion because I think this store fits in better into the community in East Anchorage with mature landscaping that seems to grow better in East Anchorage than it does in South Anchorage. The only thing that I can say is, I wish that Commissioner Robinson was shopping at the Diamond store because that's the one that really needs the help. So, all right. Thank you. Here we go. All right. Thank you very much. You are approved. This motion is approved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, I'd like to state that this limited site plan review is in conformance with 2150-320, as amended by the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Pruse.
Yeah, I'd like to say, based on the information that was, that they gave us about revenues per store, that I would think that maybe the message should go back to the home office that one of the top 15 stores could use a little TLC and a little facelift. And I wouldn't venture to get what that revenue per store is, but I know that revenue for Costco's is what, pushing $100 billion or more a year. Very good company, cutting-edge, community-sensitive. And so I would just ask that that message be sent back, that Diamond, we, since I shop at Diamond... Thank you. Actually, my wife wants me to go in there because I get too much.
Yeah. Commissioner Malkay, where do you shop? Do you have some comment?
I wanted to catch Karen before she stepped out. Erica, is she still on? She finished on a high note. We just wanted to say one more time.
She went to the restroom. She'll be right back.
Well, when she comes back. Let's catch her when she comes back.
All right.
All right. Thank you very much. We had a very good directors' meeting where we covered a lot of these committee matters. Do, does anyone have any committee reports or any comments that they would like to make at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Ferguson, seconded by Commissioner Pruse. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.